We got enough to.
Yeah, there's a.
We've got four, four of seven.
Yep, yep, okay.
And Margaret made it in.
She did, so this is what, so Adam just texted me this. Zoom workplace. He's trying to get in right now.
Well, he should, he should just click on the link that I emailed him. I emailed everybody the same link.
He's trying to go in a different.
Click on link email to you.
I texted Neil.
I just got the meeting ID number and the password, which is just eighteen nine nine. So we're leaving right now.
Why did he just say two five?
You were caller, or which is Stan's. Nation.
Under God, under this world.
Be in justice.
Big deal, it's Margaret.
He's having a couple times in place of talk.
Yeah.
There was a couple out there.
Yeah.
But yes, there are a lot of, uh, a lot of cards. Uh, all right, approval minutes, everyone, you have a chance to look at the November twelfth, uh, two thousand twenty-four minutes.
I wasn't here, so I didn't.
Yes.
Any, were there any questions, corrections, anything like that on this?
I'll make the motion we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor? That passes. Uh, all right, first thing we're going to do here, I think we have a fairly short calendar.
First or only?
Yeah, first, the only thing we're gonna do for new businesses, Robert is going to, um, talk to us a little bit about conditional zoning and, um, some changes that may be coming here in our switch. Sorry, Adam just says it says waiting, does someone have to let him in?
Shouldn't that swap, I mean, uh, I don't know. No, let me.
That's not Neil there, is it? Looks too tall.
Yep.
Looks too tall.
Nope, nope. That's not like, that's not like.
That's very strange.
Yeah. I sent him a text, he hasn't responded.
Maybe he's sick. But I'm surprised he didn't tell me.
Margaret, can you say something just to make sure you're loud enough so that we can recognize you if you have a question?
Yes, hi, everybody.
Hey, Margaret.
All right, but, I mean, like I said, she used the same process that Adam would never use to get in, so.
Yeah, all I did is click, well, I didn't have to do a password or anything, I just clicked it and it took me straight to the meeting.
Oh, there you go, yeah, that's how it should have been.
Thinking about you and your mom, Margaret.
Yes, I am, and up in the mountains, it's freezing.
Oh, man.
Sure.
Okay, I'll just go ahead.
I haven't heard.
I think something happened, I saw, I thought maybe you and, uh, she.
I haven't heard a word. I wonder, I thought about that the other day.
She put a picture on social media, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
All right.
I'm gonna interrupt you one second, you don't think we ought to try to call Neil?
I just texted him.
Oh, did you?
He didn't answer.
It's very strange that he's not here.
No, I agree.
Y'all talking about Neil, he, he texted me and told me to be sure to come.
You should text him back to make sure that he comes.
When was that, earlier today?
Yeah, just over a while ago.
Oh, like an hour?
It was afternoon, just afternoon.
It's really strange.
I asked you what was, what was being discussed, you know, and he says, you like conditional use permits as much as anybody, you need to come tonight, you know, just to be there.
Huh, hopefully it's all right.
Strange to be saying.
Whoops, um, I just realized that, no, I agree. Um, I just realized that I put the wrong, um.
Yep.
Title at the top of the memo, so I'll correct that before I put it on the website. Um, so I just wanted to go back to what this discussion is about, I wanted to go back to what the Board of Aldermen directed me to do. Uh, the last, uh, I think it was the last meeting or the meeting before last, they asked me, the planning department, to look into alternatives to the conditional zoning, I mean to, um, special use permits. The problem with special use permits is that it's a quasi judicial hearing that requires a quasi judicial board, uh, to hear, and if, according to one sixty D, if the, um, town allowed the planning board to retain review of the special use permit, that the governing board, who makes the final decision on a special use permit, could not consider anything that planning board or advisory board had to say about it, which seems like, well, if the meeting really doesn't mean anything, then why allow it to happen? So we went with that, um, there's all sorts of legal issues. So they did not ask me to come up with conditional zoning, uh, what they asked me to do is to find alternatives, and what I found with communities much like the town of Raisel Beach is that conditional zoning is probably the best fit and the most alike a special use permit used to be. So instead of it being a quasi judicial, it becomes a legislative decision, which is land use. Basically, what that means is, as opposed to holding a public hearing where only stakeholders, as we define them, within a hundred and fifty feet of the property owner.
You watch, Margaret.
Welcome. I had to put you over here because there's a couple people missing. But, um, so in, uh, when it becomes a land use decision or a legislative decision, uh, it essentially becomes a rezoning issue as opposed to a quasi judicial hearing. Essentially, what that means is, uh, when we advertise, we would advertise it as a rezoning as opposed to a special use permit. The applicant would apply for a conditional zone, uh, conditional zoning, um, rezoning as opposed to a special use permit. So that was the first and most obvious choice that I came around, uh, I came to because of Carolina Beach adopting it some time ago, several years ago, actually, after one sixty D. So when I did some benchmarking, I put the most, the most like communities to Raisel Beach, there's really no community like Raisel Beach that I could find, but when you look at population, um, uh, median home income, uh, age, um, things like that, I, I simply put in there, uh, Carolina Beach, Oak Island, Pelletier, which I've never actually, I don't even know where that's at, um, and Sunset Beach is probably one of the closest ones to, uh, uh, Raisel Beach. So, population wise, obviously Carolina Beach is much higher than, uh, Raisel Beach, uh, but the, the median age is closer than anything else, and that, that might be more indicative to the Cape Fear region, well, actually, the Cape Fear region would encompass most of these, uh, that would be more to surrounding Wilmington communities as opposed to, um, you know, Pelletier, wherever that's at. Anyway, so the options that I, that I explored with this, um, basically came down to, could we put planning board members on the TRC, that really wasn't feasible, uh, because the TRC, not that anybody on the planning board would not be considered an expert, but the technical review committee, uh, which is one of the first or the early stages of a special use permit, um, is mainly department heads, engineers, architects, um, the, the landowner, uh, and we sit down and hammer out all the details of what goes into a special use permit before we would take it to the planning board. So that really wasn't a feasible option, uh, there was a couple more, let's see, let's see what I put in here for you. Scale of zoning conditions, this is. Uh, goodness, I don't, oh, sorry, it's right here. That goes over conditional zoning. I put so much material together for you guys, I don't even remember where I put it. Also included the white pages from Coates Canon, um, that essentially goes over some of the, the pros and the cons of, uh, conditional zoning, um, and you can see that the first article that I included for you by David Owens was actually published in, in, um, two thousand twelve, this isn't, this isn't anything new, it's actually, it's actually a pretty common practice, um, but the conditional, the conditional use permit and the special use permit, uh, like I said, is quasi judicial while everything else goes over a, um, legislative decision. Let's see if there's anything else we need to. I did, um, uh, essentially put some negatives for you, um, just because, you know, that's part of the process, um, the conditions should vary, there will probably vary.
You're on page number.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on page sixty at this point, I'm sort of skipping around to what feels about right as I, as I keep going. So one of the, um, I also actually put a, sort of a mockup.
Oh, I see, maybe to second.
Yeah. So under the negatives, you've got challenges, um, they, just like a special use permit, one person on this side of the island is not gonna be exactly like the, a person on the other side of the island, so some people, even if they have a similar, uh, business, may not, uh, believe that they're being treated equally as to somewhere else, but one of the challenges for developing on an island in general is that no single situation is going to apply to every scenario, and the reason why that's important to, I was just, have Adam ever made it in? The reason why that's important to keep in mind is the fact that, um, we allow as permitted uses and currently special uses of a vast array of businesses that in the table of uses will be exactly the same, but some will be in the channel, you know, some will be on, um, you know, on the ICW or lease cut or whatever, and then another one may be down by the oceanfront, so I mean, those, those situations aren't gonna be exactly the same, so the conditions, you need to have the ability and the flexibility to apply conditions for, um, reasonable redevelopment of a property. So that's important to keep in mind, and that's why conditional zoning is, is more applicable, if it were to replace a special use permit. So it does put a little bit of the, um, it, it puts a little bit more work on staff just because we have to, uh, oh, there he is.
I can do that one.
And he made it. Uh, it does put a little bit more work on staff just because we do have to coordinate, um, these, these public meetings that the developer would want to do, um, because when an applicant comes with a conditional zoning permit or a rezoning application for, you know, for conditional zoning, then anybody in Raisel Beach can come to the meeting and , and say something, and that's not been the case before with a special use permit. Before, with a special use permit, if you did not like a project, but you don't live within a hundred and fifty feet of it, it's really none of your business, I mean, that's just what the law says. So with conditional zoning, it becomes a legislative decision and, you know, two hundred angry people could come in and say, we don't like it, no, and that happens, uh, in other communities, I mean, it does happen. So everybody sort of gets a say in it, so this gives a chance, um, with conditional zoning, the applicant has the opportunity to sort of read the, read the community, so to speak, and then put conditions on themselves, and then present that to the planning board, and then the planning board can make recommendations for conditions, um, if they agree with them or disagree with them, Coates Canon sort of spells out what the limitations of the, uh, conditions can be for conditional zoning. So, essentially, the process for implementation is a find and replace all, you would essentially get rid of the ability to select a special use permit as an option, um, you would, you would simply replace in your table of uses, um, all, everything that says S in our table of uses, which stands for special use permit, you would, you would replace with CZD, conditional zoning district.
Is it, but didn't we do that before when it was a CUP?
No, no, that was just a change in your name, this is actually a completely different process.
Well, I mean, I realize that.
Yeah, that, that, well, one sixty, when, when the state, uh, made one sixty D law, they mandated all of the counties and municipalities to use the same language so that it would be less confusing for, um, owners and contractors, so if you went for a conditional use permit in Raisel Beach, you would still get a special use permit in the city of Wilmington, they're exactly the same thing, but with a different name, so it got confusing, so they won't, they just took the law and said, this is what it's called, change your ordinance, so we didn't have any choice in that. So with this one, you would simply go through and replace, um, all the Ss with CZDs or CZ, uh, whatever you guys choose, doesn't really matter, uh, functionally, it would be exactly the same, but we can't eliminate special use permits altogether because special use permits exist currently, and you can't ask a special use permit holder to come back and redo their process for conditional zoning, it's not necessary. The reason why you have to keep it is because if a business has a special use permit, as long as that business doesn't close, it goes with the land, regardless of who owns it, so what happens is you have to give that business owner the opportunity to amend their special use permit if they want to, so the process has to remain, but by changing the table of uses, they don't have the option to select it from the very beginning. So if, if they have a special use permit that exists right now, they have the option in the future to amend it or start over with conditional zoning, but if somebody comes in that's a new business and they, they need to apply for something that would allow their business to happen, then they would only be given the option for a conditional, uh, conditional zoning, exactly. So, um, so the real quick takeaway is, is a little bit more work for staff, a little bit more, well, a lot more input from the community, functionally, it would operate the same at the end product. So a conditional zoning would look, well, it would operate almost exactly like a special use permit, you put conditions on the district as opposed to, um, um. It's, it's almost like every property becomes its own, its own entity in the conditional zoning district, when you get into the weeds of it. So, but it's just easier to think about it as the conditional zoning would replace a special use permit, it, it just functionally changes it from quasi judicial to legislative, but the impact in the final product is basically the same. And the Board of Aldermen can hear everything you have to say.
Just goes without.
They, I mean, the, the applicant can, uh, buy you coffee, you could talk to your neighbors, you could talk to the applicant, you could talk to anybody, like I said, it's a land use decision, it, it essentially, it essentially throws politics into the, to the decision making process, um, as opposed to, uh, quasi judicial where it ends up being like a court-like decision making process, which is why the planning board really shouldn't be doing special use permits, according to the Cape Fear Council government, it's anyway, I'm not second to them.
How do you define a district or a zone?
Well, I mean, uh, so.
So I'm thinking zone is like an area.
It's just that the zone and district would be what they're applying for.
Right, exactly.
It would be their own zone or own district.
Their own, okay.
Yeah, exactly, so the CZD.
Like individually, not an area.
No, no, just their own to seek.
So what, what you would start to see is, so basically, we would need, what we would need to update our, I mean, this is later, later down the, you know, it doesn't have to happen immediately, but later down the road, we should update our zoning map, we have an old plotter map, signed and sealed, um, from like fifteen years ago, hanging out there.
Like R one, R two, that kind of thing?
Yeah, exactly, so eventually, we really need to update our zoning map to be digital so that we can edit it, and eventually, what you would see with this product, with this process, is, um, let's just say, we'll just use yellow as an example, um, somebody comes in, they want to rezone, um, you know, one of those vacant parking lots down there, they're like, I wanna put a, I don't know, I wanna put a convenience store in there, so they would, uh, it's not an allowable use, it's not a permitted use, but it might be something that they could put in with conditional zoning. So what they would, the, the first step of the process is they would apply, um, given the site plan, uh, and their, you know, their actual, uh, plan for implementing this, we would have a, the, the builder or the applicant would have some sort of community meeting, probably, to where they could figure out what, um, what the town of Raisel Beach citizens want as far as conditions, because they're gonna know, you know, going into even the planning board setting, what people are gonna like and what people are not gonna like, presumably. It comes to the, we, we do a TRC, uh, meeting, technical review, which would involve, um, the police, fire, public works, um, Tony, myself, applicant, engineers, attorneys, whatever, and we sit there and we work out the details, where, you know, you're gonna have food on, where's parking gonna be, where's the exits gonna be, what, what roads it's gonna spill out on, what is this whole thing gonna look like, and we work out all the details, so we take the, you would take the community feedback from their, their, their town meeting, so to speak, um, the TRC, and we bring that whole bundle with everything, hopefully worked out before the planning board meeting, and we present it to you all, and then if you had any more questions or concerns or recommended, uh, conditions that are within the scope of the law, obviously, then you would pass a favorable recommendation to rezone that particular parcel to the CZD. And so over time, what would happen is, instead of everything just being C one, C two, C three, what have you, um, they would start to change colors and they would become CZD, CZD, and they would have conditional, they would be conditionally rezoned, and there would be specific conditions to every parcel, but it would all be part of the CZD, and it would eventually expand, this is, this is the long view, the, the big picture, long view of planning, essentially, the, the state took away, uh, small towns' ability to put conditions on a business through, uh, reduction in authority over the special use permit process, but we do have the ability to sort of, you know, massage that back with conditional zoning, um, so that it functionally looks the same in the end, it's just a little bit more work up front, really.
Robert, could you work with a, a real example, perhaps, that we've worked with, say like the Commodore Club?
Sure.
Where it started out with a, uh, I, I forget what it was called, but let's call it the Barge Restaurant or something, and there was a text amendment, and it pretty much geared it towards it would only be on their site, it could only be their site because of all the criteria, so the text amendment was the starting point, and then came, well, the SUP that we, I guess we shouldn't have heard, but we do here.
Right, well, we hadn't adopted one sixty D at that point, when that process began.
Fair enough, but, so here we were trying to imagine, we're gonna approve something, but what is it we're gonna approve, and we're always trying to keep over the curtain for that in second piece.
Right.
So what I see here is that this joins it all up.
Right, so, um, let's, let's use the Commodore Club as an example.
If I could stand the other part, the exclusion of other locations for the similar things who exist.
Right.
Would, how does that work, and if you put a CZ, are you, uh, you have access to that same CZ criteria that Group X got?
No, so the, the, you would still need a text amendment for the Commodore Club to even exist, there were, there was a series of text amendments that made it, uh, the size and the slip and the, you know, all sorts of things, that attorneys write text amendments in order to make it very restrictive so that it only applies to a couple of properties, 'cause you don't want these things just lined up down, um, lease cut, for example, so they would probably still need a text amendment for a lot of situ, I mean, not for a lot of situations, but for, for an extreme situation like that, and I would just call Commodore Club an extreme situation because it's sort of the first kind here, um, it was a special circumstance, et cetera, et cetera. The big difference between that process with the Commodore Club and this process is that the, the builder owner would really want to get the community's input, because in the, during that process, no one that lived, no, unless they lived within a hundred and fifty feet of that parcel, nobody could say anything about it, right? So what this does, and nobody lives over there except for those, you know, those town homes and a lot of the properties owned by the people who are putting it in anyway, okay? So what would end up happening is, in this case, anybody in town could come in and speak against it, if they just had it in their head that they didn't like the idea of it, they could, they could say that, and the, the planning board and the Board of Aldermen, they could take that into account. Well, well, applicant, I, yeah, I mean, well, applicant, I really don't feel like our community is on board with this, so unless you can bring me some more information on, on this, then we're just gonna have to vote no or forward a, an unfavorable recommendation, I mean, so you see there's, uh, and I'm just using, I'm not saying that that would happen, I'm just saying like, that is a very different scenario than what actually did happen because of the quasi judicial nature of that permit. So, being evidentiary, um, the permits are issued with, um, experts, uh, like your engineers, who assured us that that thing in the middle of a storm surge wouldn't float off of its slip and crash into the bridge, you know, for example, like, I mean, he's obviously an expert, he gave us the plans, he said this would not happen, uh, it's not even possible, et cetera, et cetera, um, but with conditional zoning, that's not really, you know, they could bring those to alleviate the concerns of the community, but the community still has, they can still say something. So that's one way that that, you know, that process looks differently. Because I, I believe Mr. Eads would say, the town attorney would say, before the, the public hearing is opened up for it, keep in mind what a stakeholder is, as defined by town ordinance, you must live within a hundred and fifty feet of the property or be an expert, and, or else, you know, we can't hear you, you know, I mean, usually the mayor is pretty good about, you know, he'll let somebody say something, but he won't, I mean, but we are not allowed to take it into consideration, which is basically where the planning board sits in all of this, because it is an advisory board as opposed to a governing board that would, that would be the body that issues that permit. Does that answer your question even a little bit?
Yeah, a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Well, when you read these negatives, see, you're, when you're speaking to us, you're not making it seem like it's a real pain in, in the.
Well, most of these negatives actually go, uh, are actually towards staff more than anybody else.
Right, exactly.
The conditions vary significantly from one project to another, I mean, that's a given, that's the same negative that's with a special use permit, uh, conditional zoning requires significant time and resources from staff to renew.
Yes, see, the word significant, but a minute ago you said a little, or something like that.
Well, I mean, because we're gonna be working with, um, we're gonna be working with the engineers to provide us paperwork so that we can make sure that, you know, a situation doesn't.
So you don't see it as overwhelming?
I would think that it would be overwhelming, I mean, the, I mean, for example, the town of Carolina Beach, they've got, um, their planning director, um, and I wanna say they've got two planners and maybe two zoning officials, but their population is almost three times Raisel Beach, so I mean, I think that it's something that Tony and I could do, you know, you know, at least as well as I.
And what about public hearing, who does that, how does that run?
Well, a public hearing just run, oh, that, um, so that would just, that would essentially come down to however you, um, whenever we brought back this text amendment, we could either require it or not, it could just be something that's recommended, I mean, that is a process that's not necessarily required, I just think that it's a pretty good idea that, and the, the applicant would probably want to do it too, because you don't want the applicant to come in here blind, not knowing what everybody on the island, how they feel about their project, and then all of a sudden, you know, be blindsided by fifty angry people who are just like, this is ridiculous, there's no way, you know, and, and that could, that could absolutely happen, so presumably, the applicant would want to hold one of these meetings, which we could, we would, we could easily facilitate, um, so that they can hear the concerns and attempt to address them through their own conditions, you know, what they, they propose as their own conditions to the planning board, and then move it on.
So the builder would be up for question and answer from the audience?
Exactly, they would be the ones talking, not me.
Okay.
Exactly.
Or private whatever, it seemed to me that it put the burden on the applicant.
Yes.
To conduct it.
A lot of it, yes.
And I, I made the note, does the town, like you guys, do you even participate or do you at least attend, because in a way to validate what they then document.
Yes, we would, we would, we would, um, presumably, we would facilitate this meeting, and we would be there to document that, I actually, for some of these rezoning. I actually, for some of these rezonings that went on in Navasa, I don't know if you remember, they have like three PUDs that were up for, that's Planned Urban Development in Navasa. And I went to many of their, their public hearings, and they did the same thing. Where they, they had a community, they had a series of community meetings to address concerns about how they were gonna develop these things. That process is very similar. Staff was always there. So, I mean, they facilitated, like, for example, if applicant said, here's my application, let's get, let's go ahead and schedule a meeting, then I would say, okay, I will get together with Tony and Haynes, but we would schedule a meeting and it would, it would be basically here. And they could use the, you know, our resources to put their presentation up and, and present it to everybody who decided to show up for this. We would advertise it, even though we may not actually be required to. We would advertise it because we want public input. You know, the people should have a say in what happens and where, and where it happens, really. So, but yes, you're, you're right. The, a lot of the burden does go back on the applicant, which I think is a good thing. The, the significant increase in burden for staff is facilitating these things and verifying these things and, and, you know, recording them to present to the planning board, all that stuff. So, trying to look, trying to...
If I recall some of the ones that I watched, probably Wilmington's, or maybe the county, I'm not sure which one I watched, not one, but several of them. And where, there's a list of objections that are made, and then the applicant comes up and tries to address those.
That's right.
In the, I guess it was the public hearing part of it, if I'm wrong, so.
But that would be just about applicant in Yom.
Well, they've got every opportunity to address those.
That's before us.
They can, they can have their, they can have their town hall meeting with their application to present their plans. And then if, you know, they, they say, okay, well, I think that these conditions are good enough. And then, but they're not good enough, and those same people can show up to the, to the planning board meeting, and those same people can show up to the Board of Aldermen meeting. The, I think the good part about this is understandably, the, everybody has something to say, can say something if they have something to say about a project. They're not just cut out of the process because they live down the street, you know? And if, if a special use permit is contested, for example, and it goes to State Superior Court, for example, if somebody finds out that so-and-so had a cup of coffee and that might have affected the way a board decided on how a special use permit goes, and the judge thought that that was, that cup of coffee was enough to persuade him to vote a certain way, then the judge issues the special use permit from the bench. But we don't get any say in that. With conditional zoning, you have the freedom to talk to the applicant and you have the freedom to say no, if you just don't like it.
When you say "you," you mean?
I mean, the board, people. I mean, that's where, that's where your political capital comes in. I mean, because essentially, a land use decision goes to the governing board. And if, if they think that a business needs to be rezoned with conditional zoning and the project is good according to the people who either yelled it down or hyped it up, then they can issue that permit or not.
And it goes through a cleansing before it ever gets to the board?
Oh yeah, that's the thing, the process is a little bit longer. I would, I would probably estimate this to be like, instead of it being a month process to where I, I receive an application and then we put it on the agenda for the next month, and then we put it on the agenda for the next month for the Board of Aldermen, this would be, well, you got to have your, well, you don't, you don't have to do anything. They would want to have their, their town meeting, their public meeting so that they could work out like, and address any issues that the public might have. And then they would go to the planning board at a, within a reasonable timeframe. And then you guys would hammer it out more after that. And then it would go to the Board of Aldermen. So it, it would essentially add another month or so. But I think it would be worth it because, you know, there's a good...
That was a negative too, but it's not like it's no big...
Well, I mean, I, I put the negatives in there because there's negatives to everything, depending on your, your seat in the room, really.
I didn't see that as a biggie, yeah.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I, I put them down. So you'll see number six is potential for spot zoning. We don't want that, obviously. That's on 60 still. Conditional zoning could lead to the accusations of spot zoning where zoning challenges benefit individuals, or, I'm sorry, zoning changes benefit individuals, individual parcels rather than aligning with the broader planning goals. The way you get around that is, you just really have to understand your Camel Land Use Plan or your, your master plan or land use plan, whatever the town calls it. We, ours is called the Camel Land Use Plan. Because just like with any other land use decision, if the rezoning does not match up with the vision that the town has for itself, which is laid out in detail in your Camel Land Use Plan, then you inadvertently amend your Camel Land Use Plan, and that is no good for anybody. So the impact would be spot zoning can undermine the integrity of the town's zoning map and create legal vulnerabilities if not handled properly.
So the flip side of that is you get better in touch with your land use plan.
Right.
And it guides you more than it has probably the past.
Exactly. And I would, I, I would put money that says that people who typically don't like a project don't understand our land use plan. There's a lot of public input in land use plan, and we're gonna have to update it in the next few years anyway. So we'll, we will all be more intimately acquainted with our Camel Land Use Plan, because it's a pretty long process. But it really sort of spells out how the town sees itself and what the town, and how the town sees itself in the next 15 to 20 years. So it should guide your land use decisions, and that is how we avoid spot zoning.
Do you have page 50?
Uh, what's that?
Page 50, under conditions. Specifically, we have 6A. So, I, I, this is what our ordinance would look like.
Yes, it would be similar to this. This is, basically, this was, you were on page 50 for anybody?
Five zero.
Yeah, and he's asking about 6A through E. This is, this is just sort of a mock-up testament or a strike-through underline of what it would look like. And essentially, all that happens is you add an article for conditional zoning districts, and you just strike through the special use, or renumber it, I'm sorry, you would renumber the special use permits to come later in the chapter. So, but that, all that is there for is to give the applicant, if they already have a special use permit, to amend their existing permit as opposed to starting the process over with conditional zoning.
So 6A, just as an example.
Okay.
It seems to me, I didn't understand, this was just a general placeholder or a particular reality? But if you recall when Reddicks came forward.
Right.
And, you know, yeah, it was triggered by maybe this setback issue from Intuity. But the reality, and we had faced the same thing on the Tower 7, where there was a density discussion.
Correct.
So, can you trigger density and height changes through this process?
Through a rezoning process, you can.
Per parcel, so it's...
Yeah, you can. I think that ultimately, though, if everyone would recognize that it would be a bad idea to deviate building height from the established ordinance, whether you're rezoning it or not. I'm not saying that it couldn't be an issue, but I feel pretty certain that the fact that every single building in town, as far as, you know, after the tall buildings have been built, the ordinance changed, I feel like everybody knows that it would be a bad idea to extend that height for a particular structure as opposed to, you know, that 40-foot height limit, which is all over town.
That's where the public input would...
Right, that's exactly where the public input aspect of it would come down there.
Well, the South Beach.
Sure.
10-plus years ago, they wanted to tear that down and build up a three-plus story, but since they needed a commercial on the first floor above the ground level of a certain height for a restaurant, any residential above, they needed a little bit more height. I think they were looking for 43 feet at the time. And what they were saying is, but we will do setbacks within the building so that it isn't just a big block of 43 feet. So you wind up with this give and take. And so my question was, could that happen? Just like Reddick said, well, we'll, we'll do a parapet wall and all sorts of stuff.
Neil, I think the 40 feet, we always keep it in.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's, and it's there now, but...
But it's, it's there, but there may be another way by the measurement. I think that's where they were going, Reddick was going with, how you measure.
Right, so...
They were, yes.
So I think the 40 feet's gonna stay in there in all districts.
Right.
Except the C4, which is your high-rise districts, at 96. And that's always been in there. So I don't see any changes at all in the height.
The, the thing is, is I don't think that you can go higher, but you can put a condition to make it lower. So if the general rule is 40 feet, you can, you can put the restriction on it like, well, with this particular project, I don't think it should be higher than 35 feet. You can make it lower, but you can't make it higher than what it would be. And that would be something that would be spelled out in the actual text amendment for conditional zoning is you would spell out the height. So you would essentially say, you know...
Have you ever even had one for lower, probably not, have you? Just flatter.
What happened to our camera?
Just flatter.
I'm checking on check that camera situation, I don't know what's happening here.
Yeah, but freeze me out in here.
No, it is cold.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty hot up there.
You are hot, Robert.
All right.
Getting back to your comment about the digital map, I mean,
Yeah.
As these things progress, that becomes a pretty critical tool for you to have, I would think.
I, I would think so. So right now, we, we pretty much only refer to our official zoning map if we have a question about a parcel. For the most part, everything is documented on New Hanover County's website. If something were rezoned, I would just email over their GIS analyst and have them change the letter on it so that we would know if we clicked on the little green button. But ultimately, our official zoning map is for our reference to double-check, to make sure that a zone is what we think it is, if there's any question to that. So, yes, we do need to update the zoning map, but it's not like, it's not imperative right now.
How do you keep a check on, as this thing starts to fill in with CZs? That it's not, there's not, there's not a lot of discontinuity in what you're allowing?
Well, I mean, like I said, there, there's not a blanket answer for every single business or parcel. So that's what the, as far as the conditions are concerned, that would be up to the board. I mean, I understand the desire for fairness and to say that if everybody's allowed five outdoor picnic tables with umbrellas in the parking lot, then, you know, if one business is allowed that, then all of them. But that's just not really applicable to every business. And that's just an example. Not every situation is gonna be exactly the same. So that's why, that's what I'm saying, when, when you apply conditions, it's, it's really gonna be dependent on the situation. And it really doesn't operate any differently, those conditions than a special use permit. I mean, you don't allow more than, I mean, for example, with Bevy Mark, you ask them not to, or you put a condition on them, you couldn't have any outdoor seating that was larger than a six-foot bench. I don't have it in front of me, but I'm pretty sure that's what it says.
That's what it was.
So that was contingent on how much sidewalk they had, how big their parking lot was. Well, right down the street is Zeke's, and they've got three, we amended their special use permit to allow three picnic tables or something like that, four picnic tables. And it was a different situation. They have more parking, they have more grass area. We made sure that they didn't put it in the public right-of-way, and it wasn't, like, the seat wasn't next to the road. So I mean, it, those parcels aren't terribly different in square footage. But the layout is different in such that, and the businesses aren't, you know, terribly different from each other either, to be perfectly honest with you. But the conditions have to be different because the situation is just vastly incompatible.
Going into, when Neil was talking about, would this affect the footage, height of 40? Would it affect the square footage of a unit, like apartment building where now it's 1,500 square feet, which deters, would it change that towards, you know?
Right, like, like it did with Tower 7?
Well, there versus when Reddicks wanted to do the apartment building.
Oh, got you. So, Tony might correct me if I'm wrong here. I don't believe that we really have a minimum square footage on...
Yeah, we have, there, in the, we, we do in one area, Robert.
Okay.
For, for the commercial, and that can be left in there, I think. I don't think we're trying to change that. So that's still in there, there is a minimum.
Yeah, because I was thinking about minimum housing standards for square footage. And I just think the Russell Beach handles it a little bit differently.
I don't remember it being a limit, a minimum.
I thought, I thought I remember, Chris.
That came up at Tower 7, what came up at Tower 7?
It was Reddick, I think, because they were trying, they were trying to do a bunch.
They wanted to do like 36, 800, say it.
Yeah, yeah.
But we had a minimum of 1,500.
Yeah, for the commercial as well.
Just to be sure it's printed, yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, like Tony said, it's already in there and you could, you could carry that restriction over. Like I said, you can be more restrictive without circumventing, but you can't be less restrictive, I believe. It would be something similar to the state versus, you know, local ordinance. Like you could be more restrictive, but you can't, you can't let them do whatever.
Right.
So I mean, if it's just a, if it's just a rule that's in our ordinance, then it should not get worse. If anything, it should be more restrictive.
So the idea of this really is to put back the SUP, cause it's called now a CZ something or other, kind of?
Essentially, yeah, conditional zoning district.
So that it puts the planning board back in the picture.
Exactly. And that's so that you can, that's so that the advisory board can actually vet the application and get actual public input. And the Board of Aldermen isn't just like, well, what are we hearing today? Well, we don't know, this is gonna be, this is gonna be court hearing. And you'll either issue this permit based off the facts or not.
And in a long way, they make it easier for the board too, that's already gone through all these...
Oh, the big winner in all of this is not only the people that get to say something about it, but also the Board of Aldermen, because they can actually hear all this information.
Because we've all, I've always, I've said this before, felt like we were the ones that kind of plowed through all the mess, got all the questions answered, brought up stuff they don't have time or didn't think about. And we send it to them in a nice little package. And they like that, because, taught some of them.
And, and in a perfect world, in, in a perfect world, the applicant would already have most of this stuff worked out before they even came to the planning board.
But we, it seems like we've always covered the stuff that could come around the back door, that, oh, I didn't think about that.
Right.
And...
And maybe you can think of something that...
I think this is a great idea, if I could speak to it.
Coming from... This is all for discussion.
Coming from, yeah, coming from the, so, so many people, when it changed from John Wessel, and I can understand why John wanted to retire. Brian does a great job, and by golly, Brian is by the book. And sure enough, if I, I live in on North Channel Drive, I had nothing to do with the Commodore Club. And I really couldn't, you know, if it's a special use, I couldn't speak out against it. I'll, I'll never forget the number of people in on that Bible when, when they were talking about trying to put a seafood restaurant in there at the Pier House at Johnny Mercer's. There had to be 50 people up there on that podium. It'd be anything I've ever seen in my life.
The Crab Shack, exactly. But with that's... This is, if you want an example of how this would work, go back to the Crab Shack, because that was the process of a conditional rezoning. It could have been heard under that, but because it was a special use permit, it killed that process because of the inability of parking and availability.
It just, it was a hot, hot mess. I, I'll never forget it, you're right. It, it was a sight to be seen. But I think this is just ideal, and coming from the church, the Baptist church, and trying to get, you know, parking during the holidays, I led that effort. And we had the conditions. And if I ever needed to pass that word on to somebody else at my church or somebody from, say, St. Therese called and asked about it, I could lay out, here are the conditions. And my conditions are the same that Tony gave me in 2016, or whenever that was. And I just think it's just a way to go about this thing, you know? It's, it's, I think it's something for everybody.
But you gotta get the public involved and, and... But you gotta get the public involved, and, and nine times out of ten, the public doesn't know because they don't read the paper, they don't go to the website, and I have gone on social media a thousand times and said, before you rip everybody apart, go to a meeting, voice your opinion, or your thoughts, or your this, or your that, and if they don't know about it, then they don't do it, and then they fuss about it when it's on.
Do you have a computer person that, that does town business and does things like that, you know?
Does a town of Riceville Beach page on a?
Yeah, there's, that would really be good, if we had a.
So much stuff comes out on Katie's stuff, doesn't it?
Yeah, Lance will send out a.
And Katie does her own, she's really good at what she does.
I think we've got a little bit more, what's that?
I think we got something today.
Yeah, coffee with a coffee.
Yep, and then promoted one of the.
Yeah, Katie sends those out.
But that's on social media, I don't, I haven't.
Yeah, 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 we got a news bulletin.
The girl over there does the chat with the chief thing.
It was the Coast Guard or.
Yeah, he's, he's head of the.
Lifeguard, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I think that we're having a better, I think we're having a little bit better result on those advertisements with these two new electronic signs.
Yeah, I think that's, but I'm just, my point, the point, the point what I was saying is that if they don't come to meetings, that's really, that would be different.
There's a communications manager that's maybe coming on board in February.
If you don't show up in a committee. There's certain things that the people show, like when Saint Therese wanted to build that pavilion, or, or the Crab Shack, and there's certain things that pull a bunch of people in, but the, I know the recent fussing on, on social media was the, the, the meeting that took place about parking, and somebody said something about lifeguard parking, and it just went crazy on social media.
Right.
So, and I know that's not gonna do with building or about, but my point I'm making is that the fact that.
People should show up to the meeting.
They go shop to meetings.
So they can actually hear it instead of taking a blurb off of Facebook.
So that, that's, that's funny.
Mr. Biggie just made the point, and I don't think you all heard him, he came out at just a general meeting this morning with the board and new manager. He's looking to hire a communications specialist.
Yeah.
Will be on board in February, and I saw a lot of these promises.
Yes, that'd be really good.
Yeah, so P I O.
Hopefully, that's if people pay any attention to it.
They gotta pay attention to it.
You see, you'll have to advertise that you're doing it. You got to make people know that it's there.
Robert, I have a couple of questions for you to answer.
Sure thing.
Um, first of all, are there any pending S U P apps at this point?
We, uh, we have one that Robert and I sent it back for more information.
Okay.
And then the, the church, the Methodist Church is gonna, we're assuming any time they'll come and back to us.
Is that called a?
They're gonna bring that application.
Call it burial or whatever.
Not with that, is it?
We'll have an application on Monday.
I thought that was all done. They approved it at four o'clock.
I think they did.
Well, in our ordinance, remember, we still have the S U P process.
Right, right.
If any board, so it's still there.
We had to make it a thing so that they could actually do it.
Right, so I was, so that will be, I mean.
Will they be excluded if we change it, or will they fall under the S U P?
Well, vested rights, they could choose to do whichever they want to.
Okay.
So ch- chances are, they would just continue on the process that they're at.
Hopefully, they saw the writing on the wall, and they just did the simplest thing.
Well, I mean, I, I, I think they feel pretty good about it. I'm not sure why they waited another month, so.
But the simplest thing may actually be doing an S U P, because if you, if you do the S U P and there's something else, then, because that was another one of my questions, like, once we switch over from S U P to CZ, CZ or whatever we're gonna call it.
Right.
Um, in S U P, we don't have the amount of public feedback that we could potentially have with the CZ.
Correct.
So if we have someone that says, let's use the Commodore Club, um, S U P, Commodore Club was approved and is there, now someone comes and wants to put another one there. At that point, then you have, if it's under the CZ part, you have community feedback, and potentially, community feedback can say, we don't want another one.
Exactly.
So, does that bring up a problem with the fairness of competing between S U P versus CZ, and then a fairness argument for both of them?
I don't think that that brings, I honestly don't believe that brings up a problem. It's just that the state statute changed. We had to change with it, rules change all the time, and sometimes.
Yeah, it happens.
It happens.
And that, and that's fine, I just, I, that was one of my questions that I had as well.
Yeah, no, I mean, it is a very valid concern, but what you don't want to do, well, I would, I would assume what you wouldn't want to do is leave both options open.
Yes.
And no one take the actual.
Oh, yeah, no.
Because I can tell you what could happen. I, I bring a text amendment that, that allows one thing, and then I bring another text amendment that allows another thing, and then I bring another text amendment that allows another thing, and in the long run, over, over this long period of time, I have introduced a bunch of text amendments that you're really not knowing what it builds up to, and then all of a sudden, I put a bar on my roof in my R1 down the street, and you're just like, well, how did this happen? I'm like, well, there's a bunch of text amendments that happened.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, yes, the text amendments will still happen, special use permits will not.
Right, so in, in, in essence, the, the S U P, because it's limited, could allow for, I mean, the greater possibility for something to be accepted.
Right.
Um, community feedback, obviously, is important in the CZ part, so that would be my next question. How quickly do you think the board would, is interested in changing over, or if they're going to, to the commercial zoning?
I, well, so.
Timeline.
I haven't, I haven't spoken to any of the Board of Aldermen, but I've, I've talked with Tony and I've talked to Haynes about it. Haynes likes it, 'cause he used it in Brunswick County.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I would, I would assume that it would probably be in the next couple of months if we, if, if the board wanted to go that route, I could come back with a text amendment. The next step of this process, realistically, for me, um, is to send this, I want, I want Jeremy's input from Carolina Beach, because they changed over to theirs, they were one of the first adopters, um, they're the community that more closely matches the town of Riceville Beach, and I wanna send it to, uh, the Cape Fear Council governments to look over and see what they think, and run it by the, the town attorney and make sure that we're all happy with it. Now, what that means is, sending out that information becomes, you know, it, the ball is in their court, and I don't know how long, but they will take.
Yeah.
I would assume, which is a terrible thing to do, um, I would assume that it wouldn't take more than a, a month or so for them to get back, give us any feedback, and then I could have a meeting with Tony and Haynes, and we could sit down and hammer through this thing, and then see what everybody thinks, and then bring it back for an actual text amendment.
Are those three touchpoints happening in parallel?
They would be, yes.
So what do you, because you and I talked about this months ago, like Carolina, the Carolina Beach.
Right.
You seemed a little hesitant back then. Is that just because you didn't know?
Well, I didn't know mu- much about, I didn't know as much then as I do now.
So you are, you are comfortable, you and Tony as well, are comfortable.
Yeah, I think so, I think in the beginning, we were both kind of.
Yeah, 'cause I remember, I think I talked to you about this one, yeah.
I think we're on board.
And Haynes has some practical experience with it, just because, you know, the communities in Brunswick County does.
Yeah.
I mean, Jeremy has experience with it, and, you know, we, we both have a working relationship with other, you know, planners around and about town, uh, but I think if we ran it by enough people, they could give us enough information to see where I.
Right.
Am making a mistake in a text amendment before it gets to you, so, yeah, I'm more comfortable with it now than I was, for sure, especially after reading, um, U N C School of Government's white pages on it. Uh, it, it sort of spells out everything in detail, and I'm just trying to water that down so that it's more adjustable.
And Cape Fear Government, they were pretty, without saying, they were, they told us to do this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I forget me to say.
Without, without saying, boo.
Well, yeah.
It's still clever with the planning board to do this.
Yeah.
This guy, this guy that spoke to us, seemed very, yeah.
Yeah, he was like, why are you still doing that?
Guiding us down the path.
Well, awesome, I appreciate it. Does anyone else have any questions?
Okay, so the next step, the next step is to have these conversations with, you know, uh, COG.
Right.
Um, Carolina Beach, uh, if anybody has any questions or suggestions on it, and I work through these details so that Tony and I both are a hundred percent familiar with the processes and, um, what is required, just to make sure that everything fits into place before we get there, so I can, I can send that stuff out, um, this week, honestly, maybe, hopefully this week. I don't know, I've got a lot going on. But I'll take it up this year.
Can I actually get the Board of Aldermen's sort of blessing to move forward on that?
Um, well, I mean, we get their input.
They're kind of.
I, they understand what's coming their way.
I think they are.
I think the Board of Aldermen, I mean, I, I don't guess what any board will decide on, I gave that up a long time ago. Um, I think that because it arms them with more information to make a, a better informed decision, I think they would appreciate that.
Yeah.
So I don't see that there would be much resistance.
It weeds out, planning board weeds out so much stuff that never needs to go.
Makes their job easier, I would assume.
We deliver.
Oh, okay, um, does Bullock would like to say?
This is, this is a public meeting and discussion, and what I am requesting as Sue Bullock with the chamber is a copy of the material you've, uh, discussed tonight, because the agenda was not on the.
Right.
Website, so there was no public, uh, app. I called and Robert told me that you were still reading tonight, but there was no public ingredient.
That was first call.
You want that right there?
We'll, we'll make sure, oh, yeah.
I just took the lighting part now.
Yeah, yeah, and, and.
It's my copy that he printed, she's welcome to it.
We're not out there to make the public requirement of a public meeting published.
Yeah, we'll put that on the, uh, we'll put it on the website, but because this isn't, um, we weren't, there was no, um, there was no requirement to advertise.
I, I, I'm not, no, it just, it needed public notice.
Sure.
And that, the, what you're discussing doesn't necessarily have to be in it, but you want the public notice that it was done.
Sure.
Question from, from me too.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you put, uh, these things in, out here, that, that, all this out there?
Yes, ma'am.
That you ran off?
Yeah, they were a prime.
Would you please save one for me, 'cause I really, I mean, I tried reading all my little machines, but, you know, it's tough. I would love, 'cause this is, you know, this is, need to understand a lot of something, and it's good, so I really would like to read your copy.
Sure.
Like she ju- did you get George from here?
Uh, I put everybody's binder's up.
And it's my fault that I didn't go there, 'cause every day I go down, I go, I'll stop on the way back.
Right.
Well, it's easier.
And then I didn't, but I really, now that I've seen the, that it's extensive, I would love to read it.
Sure, and I'll, I'll make anybody a copy who wants it to take with you, and you can take the one out of your, um, binder with you, there's no problem. I just need to correct that memo heading.
Oh, yeah.
I saw it, and I'm like, I saw it.
I was copying and pasting and I messed it up.
Yesterday, when I started to read, I'm like, no, no, but I, it was just a mistake.
All right.
Do you want me just to take it out of here then?
Sure.
How about if I take the whole notebook?
Go for it.
I hate to take it out and mess up the notebook, it's so nice.
Do we have any old business to discuss?
I don't know if this is old or new, but Cheryl, is this your last meeting?
It is my last meeting.
It's just, I'm gonna tell you that I'm gonna miss you.
I'm gonna miss all you guys.
So you're gonna come next time, huh?
I'm late.
Yeah, so.
Well, see, it could be my last one too.
I know, mine too.
And.
Mine as well, yeah.
Yeah.
But I just.
But I, I can't.
You know you're.
I, I know I've done, I've done my three tours of duty.
But we just, you know, just think it needs to be acknowledged, to, to think, you know?
Well, thank you guys.
She's not gonna hear Cheryl.
Well, I appreciate all that you guys do, Tony and Robert, you know, you make it easier for everybody.
Well, it's worked, so.
It's been, it's been fun, I've been very, um, educated.
See, it is neat to really learn the running.
Oh, it is.
See, I just love that.
Stuff I would've never had a clue about.
Exactly.
It's a small town, huh? People are not more interested, the public, I mean, to even a Board of Aldermen meeting,